I keep looking down here and see, I don't know, like, like shouldn't that like have a red, like a red ring logo? Good evening, everyone. It is six oh three and we'd like to call the meeting to order. Um, I think just super quick, there was some information I saw online that was incorrect. There's no public hearing today, so thank you for coming, but there is no public hearing. There was some confusion regarding the open comment, that portion is for city council, so if that changes anybody's opinions, then I figured you should know now, rather than wait till the end of the meeting. Um, so with that, Katie, I'll kick it over to you.
Yeah, so I wanted to, kind of along the same lines, I did see quite a few questions and comments about, um, how we notice things and then how you can tell if there's a public comment or a public hearing and what the difference is. So, this is our, uh, city website, francisutah.gov. And, from this is the homepage, if you wanna see what's going on in the city on the meetings, click on this link right here, agendas. Um, we have three sections of this, the first is city council meetings, this is planning commission meetings next, and then public notices. So, what is the difference between a public notice and an agenda? Uh, when we have certain types of applications come in, we're required, either by state law or by ourselves, to hold a public hearing. So, state law requires we hold them for annexations, code amendments, zoning amendments, any legislative changes. Francis City has decided to hold public hearings for conditional use permits and a few other things that aren't required by the state. So, if there is gonna be a public, um, hearing, then we put it down here in the public notices, and we post these at least ten days before the meeting. Agendas, we are required by state law to post those at least twenty-four hours before the meeting, but a lot of times we try to get that earlier if we can. Sometimes we're, you know, figuring out the details of a meeting sooner than later, so then that might be twenty-four hours, but most of the time you should see this agenda up at least two or three days before a meeting. Um, so, just to click on one of these, this is what a public hearing looks like. It talks about the specific issue that we'll have a public hearing. Um, and then it also lists where we publish it, so it's, um, a lot of times we publish them in the newspaper, or we email the newspaper, or the news, whichever, we can do either or. Uh, then we put it on the public notice website and on our own website. But if this, like, this was one, this is one for next week's meeting with the city council. And we're gonna take, have a public hearing on the Best Western Hotel, so that's the one that is up there. Um, now let me go back to, sorry, it's a little hard for me to read all these. Okay. So from our, and then this is an agenda, this is tonight's agenda. And, you'll see that, just list what we're doing, if there's going to be a public hearing, it will say, "Public Hearing." Let me show last times, so you can see the difference. So, this is last month's meeting, we had two public hearings, those were identified on the agenda as a public hearing. Um, here's city council, just to show you the difference on their agenda. So, they always have a public comment period before their meetings. Anyone that wants to come and comment on any issue that's not a public hearing that meeting is welcome to. And then you get up to two minutes, and I think it says that we go up to ten minutes for that portion. But Planning Commission really doesn't have a public comment period at the beginning of our meetings, like the city council does. Because we're, Planning Commission is an advisory body, they're looking at land use issues, they're not really over the whole entire city. So, um, city council, it's more appropriate for them to do that public comment period. One more thing before I get into the, we get to the meeting today. So, there's, um, there's a really good website called the Utah Public Notice Website, and this is one of the websites that we are required by law to post all of our meetings on. So, this is what it looks like from the homepage, you can go over here to search. And, name of entity, you're gonna wanna type in Francis, or if you're interested in like Summit County, you could type in Summit County. So, we typed in Francis and then we scrolled down to see what's posted. Um, here's the meeting for tonight, Planning Commission meeting. You get all the information here, including our agenda, if there's a public hearing, that will be listed on there as well. And then this is the part that I think is really helpful for people, is where you can subscribe by email. So if you want to be aware of any time a public hearing or a, um, a meeting agenda is posted, then you can put your name and your email in here, and you'll get an email every time something is posted to that body. So like, I know I had to do one for Planning Commission and one for city council. I do it myself, just to check and make sure things are going through, uh, so you can subscribe to that. And then, um, then you should get a notice when anything is posted, so you don't have to keep going back and checking the website. You'll just get an email saying something was posted, you can see what it was, and that helps you stay in the loop of what's going on in Francis, so. Um, that, I think that's everything I wanted to cover, so, okay, thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You ready to get into Crystal Farm?
I am, I'm just taking a, taking a deep breath here, there was something I was gonna say, but now I forgot, so.
Okay, well.
Couldn't have been that important, let's move on.
Okay. So, Crystal Farm, um, Garrett and Brett Cris- Brent Crystal are owners of parcel FT eleven. Uh, it's a almost ten acre property located out here on SR thirty-five, it's at five thirty-seven east. Um, if you're familiar with the area, the Frontier Acres subdivision is right next door to it, it's just on the west side of that. Um, the front half of the parcel is zoned residential half, the back is zoned ag one. Garrett wants to subdivide the property into, um, a half acre residential lot and a nine acre remainder parcel for agriculture. There is an existing residence on lot one, you can see that on the plat here, right here, so he already has an existing residence. Um, but he wants that to become the ADU, so the accessory dwelling unit. And it's, it meets the requirements, it's less than a thousand square feet, so we can let him do that. He'd like to bu- build a new primary residence out there, um, that will be larger than a thousand square feet, so then this existing home will become the ADU. Uh, we've put a note on the plat that the remainder parcel is not buildable until all the city's building requirements are met. So, we won't be able to build on this remainder parcel, but just on this half acre lot here. Uh, he did correctly show the irrigation ditches on the front of the property, right here. He also, um, identified that there's a thirty foot easement there for that irrigation ditch, and then dedicated the U dot right of way, which we like to see, so that looks good. Um, the subdivision will not impact a ditch. And a third of the, an acre, the one that is in this hatched area, that's the U dot right of way, so a third of it will be dedicated. A third acre is dedicated to U dot. Uh, no construction plans were required for this subdivision, because all of the infrastructure is there, there's no additional improvements like water sewer lines or a road. So, staff and the Summit County Recorders Office reviewed the preliminary plat. Uh, they incorporated all of our revisions, and I feel that they've met the requirements of a preliminary plat. And my recommendation is to approve it. This is, so I wanted to say one more thing too, so we updated the subdivision code last year to be, you know, in accordance with state law. So this is the first subdivision we've had come in since then. And the Planning Commission, if you remember, is part of the Administrative Land Use Authority for the preliminary plans. So, uh, this is the only time you'll see it, it doesn't go to city council. And Scott and I have worked through the preliminary process of getting this reviewed and, and, you know, compliant with our code. And this is, Planning Commission gets the final, like, approval on this, and then they'll go to the final plat, which is all done internally with Scott and I in the office, so. Anyway, that's it for me, Scott, I think you had a staff report?
Yep. This one's pretty simple, um, like Katie said, the existing, they have an existing water and sewer service that they're going to connect to, the new house to, and so there's no road or storm drain improvements. Um, so, they are turning over the right of way that, um, where the road is. And so now it'll be given to U dot and the city, um, instead of them owning out the middle of the road, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any thoughts, anybody, or anything they wanna discuss? This one seems pretty cut and dried to me.
No brainer.
No brainer, you're good. Well then, I will entertain a motion, and that motion would be an approval of a preliminary plat, correct, Katie?
Right.
Yep.
I second that.
I was entertaining, but.
So, you would make no motion?
Make a motion.
So, I make a motion that we approve the Crystal Farm.
Preliminary.
Preliminary plat.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, can I get that again, so who, so Commissioner Lawson, you motioned to accept it, approve it, and who was the second?
Scott.
Okay, thank you, thanks, I'm very new at this, so just be patient with me tonight.
Doing double duty? Well, I was try- I'll try and make it as clean as I can, and if you want, I'm happy to initiate motions, I just think it's.
That's, no, that works, I just might be going back more than I usually do, so.
Okay, no problem.
All right.
Um, real briefly, I do recall what I was gonna say, in case somebody was concerned, I also saw comments about this meeting. My vote was to split this meeting because of the number of public hearings. So that's why we have having a secondary hearing, is because none of us wanna stay till midnight. So, if there's any question as to why there wasn't a secondary meeting this month, that's at my request.
Yeah, actually that was something I was gonna bring up too, because when we talked about it at the end of the last meeting, I think I said we need a special meeting, that wasn't the case, this isn't a special meeting. Uh, we have a policy in this city that if we can't, um, handle the workload, like if we have a really full meeting and we need to schedule a second meeting, that we will do that, just to, um, be good with the due process requirements in the state. So, sometimes we cancel meetings, sometimes we have to schedule a second meeting. If we do have to schedule a second meeting for Planning Commission, we usually try to get that on the first Thursday, that's kind of when we have set aside to do that, but in this case, some people couldn't make it, so we just went to the first Wednesday.
Got it.
So does that mean we're still gonna meet on the twentieth?
Um, I'm not planning on it at this point, I don't have anything coming up that's on the, so I think we're gonna cancel that one. So this will probably be our only meeting for the month.
Okay, well that's, that's actually good to know, 'cause I was just rearranging my plans because of that.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, thanks for letting me interject there.
Absolutely, I was just gonna say that too.
So I guess, looking at the agenda, we are moving on to Town Center Landscape Plan?
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so. Um, I'm not gonna read through my whole staff report, because a lot of it is gonna be repetitive from what we talked about back in January. If there's anything that you wanna go over, let me know, but otherwise, I'm just gonna hit the highlights of things that have changed. Okay. So, just as a refresher, this is the location, it's here on the corner. And, this is, uh, our building here that we're in, and it's just right next door to where we're at today. And a reminder again that this is an administrative item, as it's a part of the landscape plan we're gonna be looking at tonight, and then three conditional use permits, so it's all administrative. I'm gonna hit the, uh, the highlights of what's been updated since last time. Uh, the trash storage plan was approved last time, you'll remember that. The parking site, architectural design, and outdoor lighting plans were forwarded to the city council with a positive recommendation. So tonight, we're looking at the landscape plan, because it was tabled last time until it aligned with the site plan and complies with our Francis City Code. Uh, we're also looking at three of the four conditional uses that were submitted for this project. The conditional use permit for the restaurant with alcohol service was forwarded to the city council with a positive recommendation. They added a couple of conditions, or you added a couple of conditions to, uh, set the hours of operation between five thirty and eleven, five thirty AM and eleven PM, and replace the privacy fence with an eight foot precast decorative concrete wall with a tree buffer. They made that update on the plans, so when we look at the landscape plans, you'll see that change, it's also on the site plan. Uh, then tonight, we're gonna be looking at the other three conditional uses. So the hotel and drive-through restaurant CUPs were tabled until the plans comply with our code architecture and parking requirements, to evaluate the alignment of the drive-throughs with properties across SR thirty-five, and to consider adding landscape buffers to the drive-through lanes. Those are the things we're gonna be looking at, focusing on tonight. Um, so first, looking at the landscape plan. This has been updated, um, you'll notice on this, this is the main area, like one of the main areas that we were concerned about last time, and there's been a tree buffer that's added there. There's a lot more trees, a lot more street trees, which I'm excited about. Um, let's see, let me get into a little bit more of the details on. So they have a hundred and five trees now, fifty-two are medium-sized deciduous trees, it's kind of a mix of honey locust, quaking aspen, plum and oak. And then fifty-three of the trees are small media and medium-sized evergreen trees, mixture of juniper, spruce and pine. There's also ninety-five shrubs that are deciduous, plus twenty-three evergreen shrubs throughout the development. There are two types of perennials and native, some native shrub, shrub, blah, shrub grasses as well. Crushed rock is planned as the ground cover in areas not covered by a structure asphalt or sidewalks. So, all of this, um, material you see here is the crushed rock. There are thirteen trees planted along the Spring Hollow frontage on this side. Right there, I'm gonna zoom out a bit. There we go. So thirteen trees throughout there, kind of a mix of different types of trees. Um, then there's twenty-six on the SR thirty-five frontage on this side. Uh, Francis City Code, the landscaping code, we tried to get one feet, one tree per twenty feet, and it doesn't have to be exactly at that interval, they can be clustered. This, um, is a huge improvement from what it was before, we're now at about one per twenty-four feet. In the previous approval, when Russ Witt was the applicant, the Planning Commission approved a landscape plan with a reduced number of trees along the straight road frontage, so that the trees would not create a barrier in front of the street-facing storefronts. So I feel like with this increased amount of trees and what we previously approved, that this would meet our requirements. Um, the landscape plans do include irrigation plans, and it seems to me that water conservation was a primary consideration in making these plans, which is also one of our requirements. So, I feel that it's compliant with the, our code and previous approvals. Um, how do you guys wanna handle this tonight? Do you wanna go ahead and motion on the landscape plan, or do you want to just get through all, everything and then do all the motions? 'Cause we can stop here and make a motion, or we can get through, talk about the CUPs.
I like to split it up, 'cause then it's cleaner, and we don't go, is anybody objective splitting it up? Okay, let's do it. So, is that the end of staff for landscape?
That's it for the landscape plan, so if you would like to talk about this more and make a motion on the landscape plan, this is a good time to do it.
Um, I think we should let, McKenna go first.
Uh, sorry, I am still hung up on the architectural plan though. Um, we approved it in January's meeting.
You didn't approve it, you had a positive recommendation.
To city council with a positive recommendation.
Yeah.
So I went back and I'm looking at the minutes, and it looks like, um, everybody except for, uh, Rich and I voted nay. Or, everybody voted aye for that, except for Rich and I.
Okay.
And Kim voted aye to move it to the po- to the city council with a positive recommendation for architectural, do you remember that, Kim? Did, 'cause from my recollection, you voted no to everything.
That was the.
No, that was last month's meeting, um.
There was one thing I.
Am I looking at the minutes from last meeting?
There was.
On January's.
No, that, I think you're looking at the right ones McKenna.
I am.
Yeah, it was a three to two vote, Suzanne and I both had the same thing written in our note. We, we checked every one of these motions, just to make sure that, that we were both in agreeing in how they worked. We went back and listened to, actually, we did go back and listen to these ones too, and so I feel like this was an accurate collection.
Okay.
It was a three-two vote to forward it to Planning Commission, or to city council, with a positive.
I, I just, I'm still, I'm stumped, because when I look at this hotel, it's four stories, which our code says three stories currently, and I know that that went to city council and it was a tie vote, so they're gonna revote on that, um.
So, hold on.
Yep, I know. So I, so maybe not start with landscaping with me, 'cause with me, I just see this, it's four stories and it doesn't even meet code.
Well, hold on, we're splitting everything up.
Yep.
So today we're talking about landscaping.
Yep.
Right now, we are gonna, so, I kinda mentioned this in my staff report earlier. One of the reasons that the plans were tabled, the conditional use permits were tabled for the hotel, is because of the architecture not meeting the, there was, you know, the three-story requirement in code, and they have a four-story plan. So, that is something that I'm planning on talking about in a minute.
Okay.
When we get to the conditional use for the hotel.
So that's probably my fault.
If someone else wants to start.
No, it's probably my fault, 'cause I wanna split these things up.
No, and I, I get that.
So I think that the landscape is what we're reviewing, and the height of the building is irrelevant, 'cause the plants will be the same whether it's three or four.
Yeah.
And so, I guess I'll start in saying that, and maybe you were researching something else. They've added the extra trees, and, and in reviewing it, I don't think you've shown it, um, and it's not as tied to this, but the alignment of the drive-throughs with the other stuff and the pictures in the report, all put, all put my mind at ease in terms of the landscape meeting the requirements to mitigate that for the additional stuff.
Yeah, one thing I didn't show here, it will come up more, when we talk about the drive-through conditional uses, but we might as well highlight it now, is that the applicant has added some trees here and here to help, um, block the light from going out into the street and across the street. So, they have added a landscape buffer of three tree clusters here and then here.
And as far as I can recall in terms of the landscape plan, I think that was the biggest one that we added that wasn't included in your staff recommendations, so.
Yeah, and then also the tree landscape, um, buffer right here.
And then the barrier, that's right, correct. So, I think for me, I think the things, the stipulations that we've already rehashed have all been met, so, um, I don't, I don't really have any more comment necessarily relating to the landscape plan. Other than, I guess, uh, one last thing, I didn't look, what are the trees, are the trees evergreen? 'Cause we, that was another tricky one.
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, uh.
On the drive-through, but also along the wall, 'cause that's essentially what we're mitigating, is the view from the neighbors, so that, that, along that wall line.
Yeah, let me, um.
If they aren't, I didn't look at the key yet, if they aren't evergreen, I would.
It's, it looks like they're honey locusts, so they're not evergreens.
So yeah, I would just make those evergreen, just like we did for the other one. Yeah, they might have made them honey locusts to balance it out, but I think like the whole goal and intent is to mitigate the, the view and the sound and the light, so evergreen makes more sense to me.
Yeah.
But isn't the east wall a rock wall?
Exactly, eight foot concrete wall.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be both.
So where are the trees at?
They're in front.
In front of it, so.
On the side of your building?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, to grow, to grow up. That's, yeah, I mean, those are all the recommendations I had in accordance with the landscape plan, so, unless there's, uh, do we have other comments? Ready to go? Ken, no comment?
No, I just asked it.
You're good. Rich, what do you got, buddy?
So I'm just looking at the tree type, so, can you explain to us which way people are driving in the drive-throughs? So, so 'cause the tree location and its ability to block lights, it depends on where, how people are driving. So which way are they driving in the drive-throughs?
Exactly where I put the evergreens, that's what we talked about last time.
Okay.
So, if we go to the site plan, you'll see that, I won't go over there, but you'll see arrows on the site plan that show that traffic, the cars will come in this way, and on this side, will come in this, this way.
Okay, but so if they're coming in on that side, then there isn't a tree in front over there?
You only drive through one way.
No, but so on the right building.
Okay, so on this, this one here?
Yeah, so if they're coming in on the left side, then that tree would block them, but if they're coming on the right side, it doesn't look like there's any big tree to block the lights.
It's one, it's one way.
Yeah, each one's.
Yeah, I know, but that's my question is, so on the right-hand one,
Uh-huh.
we don't have a big tree at the end of that, we've got a little cluster trees.
Yeah, this was added, this is evergreens.
That was the add, was the little trees to block headlights.
And I guess I'm just concerned, because they're shown so little.
Well, they're, it's a cluster.
Okay, yeah.
Let's see, like three evergreens, they're the, one of the pines, I think.
Dwarf bristlecomb pine, how high does that get?
Yeah, now, why does it get? Do they, so, I don't know anything about these trees, is that sufficient to block, or do we need a bigger tree there?
So, I, let's say let's come back to this, because it's more related to the conditional use.
So it seems that they only grow.
I, I think that's a good idea, let's come back to this, because we have other things that will take priority over the landscape.
So, without those questions answered, do we still wanna approve a landscape plan though?
It's up to you guys if we wanna just keep moving and then we'll come back at the end.
Well, I mean, I think the landscape plan is indicated that it's gonna be three clustered evergreens at the drive-through point, which is what we asked for, is some sort of blocking mitigation.
Which they get three to four feet, they're, they're, they grow to be three feet by four feet.
But you're gonna have, you're gonna have curb, and you're gonna have all of that, so I.
Headlights are usually less than three or four feet, I would think.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Specifics come through in the conditional use permit, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah, like.
I mean, it's a rural area and there are big trucks.
That's true, but.
Lifted trucks.
That's true.
Um, I actually do have another, uh, comment about the landscaping plan.
He seems real concerned about which type of tree, so if we have a suggestion, let's just make it.
Yeah, could we make the suggestion to have the, the grouping of trees be, um, over six feet tall at maturity? Yeah. Could we make the suggestion to have the, the grouping of trees be, um, over six feet tall at maturity?
I mean, they grow, right? I mean, it says right down there, when we plant them, when we plant them.
I think she just Googled.
So I Googled it, and it says that they grow three feet by, uh, four by three feet, so.
You know, I, I, I'm good, yeah, we'll, we'll plant a tree that gets six feet.
Okay.
Love it.
Yeah.
Great. Will that still, if they only replace that with one tree, will it still meet the requirements for how many trees they need on the site plan?
So you're saying one, you're saying one, uh, evergreen tree that grows in excess of six feet?
Okay, great. Yeah, I don't think that would change.
Cluster versus.
Okay, then I just have one other comment on the landscaping plan. Right there in front on the corner, it's a big bald patch of no landscaping. Um, could we add some perennials, shrubs? I know that you probably don't wanna block that view of the hotel, but some sort of plant life there?
I mean, I think I meet code, and, and I think that we're gonna, you know, obviously go above and beyond this. I mean, we wanted to meet it and, and go on, but you know, I mean, it's really hard for me to say exactly what I'm gonna do right now. I just wanted to meet code, and, you know, I listened to your suggestions last time, I've added a bunch more. I think I'm over the code now. Um, you know, I mean, I just don't wanna tie myself into something that your thoughts and my thoughts are different, right?
For sure, but when you submit a site plan, so when I, I don't know how Francis does it, but when I was a planner, what we did with site plans is like once, in order to get their, the, the CO, we would go out and we would literally say like, yep, they put this bush in their, in, that they said they would, in their site plan.
And that's exactly why I'm right here. So I, I feel like I meet code, I, I feel like, okay, I'm going six foot, and I don't really feel I want, I want to obligate myself to anything else, and if I see something in the future that maybe we wanna do, I'll look for it. I'll be certainly, come once it's built and I can see it, I'll come back and revisit it with you.
For sure. So as far as like, uh, just like, uh, a partnership with the city, being a good actor, and when we're as citizens, making some requests for some beautification of this site plan, especially in that front where people are, what people are seeing as they're coming into the community. I know that you're meeting code, I, I just think that like, a few more shrubs and plants and perennials right there in that front quarter, instead of leaving a bald patch.
And, and you'll see another condition used permit when we come in for the marquee, so, you know, maybe we'll just address it when I come in for the marquee. But I feel like right now, I, I, this is what I wanna stick with right now.
Yeah. I feel like when you come in for the marquee, we probably won't address the plants, honestly. That won't, that won't be.
It'll, it'll show everything.
It'll show everything, but we'll be addressing the sign and not the plants.
You know, I, like I said, I, I feel like I'm there, um, and I feel like I, I would like to address it later in the day.
Got it.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so. I think we need to point out that we, we're gonna require a sidewalk, we've talked about a sidewalk across the front of that. So there is gonna be a sidewalk across there too, that's not shown.
Great.
So. Yeah, and presumably that sidewalk is gonna have an entrance. Is that, I mean, that's a door to that, right? Or is that an open, where the barn, other vein is? Is that open, or is that solid?
Well, it's a UDOT, you know, that we're working through now, um, uh, come with that UDOT and tie it back in, it's a, we're just currently working with UDOT on that, so.
Yeah, there's no door there, though.
Okay, Scott, where do you mean the sidewalk's gonna be?
No, it's a fortress. You have to go in from there.
Got it.
So like curb and gutter.
Right around the Spring Hollow.
It shows curb and gutter right now, it just doesn't show the sidewalk. The plant tag is over the top of the line, so I was like.
Away from the hotel.
Yeah, so, um, the sidewalk's gonna go around and go along thirty-five, and there'll be, um, an ADA ramp that'll go and tie over, and so people can cross the street, um, on the corner. Um, so that's gonna kinda add concrete to that, so adding more, I don't know, it's gonna kind of.
Cause this looks like it has.
He'll have to move some of those bushes around too, so.
So where's, so will the sidewalk be there, or where's the sidewalk?
The sidewalk's gonna be out here. Cause there's gonna be a park strip and a sidewalk.
So we're gonna see a park strip?
Just like.
Just like here?
Yeah, just like here, but we have the parking, so there's a spot, so there's gonna be curb, gutter, space, sidewalk, space, and then the building.
Oh, that's all rock.
It's gonna be sidewalk. We're working with UDOT right now to see what their, how, what width and that they were gonna require for this, the park strip. Okay, do we have more, any more questions from the group?
I make a motion that we accept this, I believe that it meets the code that's required, so accepting the landscaping plan for the town center, um.
And the one.
Submitted with the.
Six-foot evergreen.
That six-foot evergreens.
And place of the cluster.
At the drive-through location as discussed.
And I'll second. We're gonna give Katie just a second to catch up.
Thank you.
When she nods at me, we'll vote.
Okay, condition to change cluster of evergreen of pines to six-foot.
To an evergreen growing at least to six feet, I think is how we have maturity was the terms.
Six feet at maturity, and change honey locust to evergreen.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I heard Scott say that.
A buffer, okay. That's what I thought I heard too. Okay, and then the second was, um.
Chair.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll do my usual, and we'll start down here with the vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Nope.
Aye.
Kate? Landscape will pass. We'll need to let Katie type that up really fast, and then we'll move to the next item on the agenda, if I can get my iPad to go back out.
So that was a four to one?
It's four to one.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
So the next action item will be town center hotel conditional use permit.
Yep. All right, so. Um, we've already talked about the tree buffer that changed. That was actually a plum tree buffer, but now we're switching it to evergreen, so, um, that's already been done. Um, the applicant did replace it with a, the fence, replaced the fence with a precast wall.
That's awesome.
Yep, just like we talked about last time. Um, also on this edge here, it goes down to a, let me switch to the site plan, cause it's labeled better there. Uh, there, there it is. Okay. So, this is the precast decorative concrete wall, eight feet. At this point, in the back of the parking lot, and by the trash storage, it goes to a rock retaining wall that's less than four feet. That's, so it doesn't have to be engineered. Um. And then on the back corner here, between this, the town center development and the city property, this will be an eight-foot vinyl fence and an earth tone. So that's changing height, it's going a little higher, it was six feet before, now it will be eight feet, and we'll have that on that side, have the fence there for the buffer. Um, I feel like the buffer plan will help mitigate the detrimental effect of disruption of privacy, additional noise, and outdoor lighting from the parking lot, building lights and vehicle lights. Then moving on to lighting, last time, there were some concerns about the properties across the street. So I wanted to go through, this is, um, a study that staff did. Um, the applicant, let me go up to the end page here, just to show you what happened. So the applicant place, had a surveyor come out, and all these red places are where they surveyed, and they, um, put markers there. And then I went out, and Scott and I went out and looked at how those align with the properties across the street. So, it gets into the number, I, like, there's some numbers in the report, which I won't talk about, but if you wanted to see how those correspond, you'd go to that end page. So this is the Spring Hollow road access. Um, this is the survey markers, and in this location, there is a home right there, um, that lines up with the access point. The, you know, this will probably be the area that's most impacted from the vehicle headlights. Uh, they, Scott and I talked quite a bit about, you know, we wanted to suggest relocating this access point, and if you, this is why I put this, um, aerial view of it in. This street has quite a few, uh, homes already, so it didn't look like there was anywhere else that was like an open area. Also, Scott, city engineer recommends that the access be as far from the intersection as possible. So he likes where it is now, and it was also approved, this development was approved before with the access in that location, so.
But they're coming in with enough adjustments that were not obligated by that prior approval.
Yeah, I'm just mentioning what our analysis looked at there. So, city engineer Scott, he's the expert on where he likes these intersections to be in the city, and that's what his recommendation is, to keep it where it is. And, and there's not really another place on Spring Hollow that isn't going to have that. Um, the applicant has voluntarily said that he would, um, coordinate with the homeowner there and see if they'd like to put in a landscape barrier, and work with them on that. But that's not something we can enforce, because it's not on his property, but he's willing to do that, to help mitigate the problems there. Um, then the other access points, so moving to, this is the State Road thirty-five access. Um, here are the markers, here's the alignment, there's actually a driveway to another business that it aligns with, so I felt like that was a really good place for it, and it will have minimal impact there. So I don't recommend any mitigation measures for that location. This is drive-through one, and you see the markers here on this side, um, where it aligns is with a, um, with a driveway on the other side, and so it's like a secondary driveway, and then a side yard. So, they also, I said in my report, they added three evergreen trees, but it's actually gonna be one larger evergreen tree. And they put it where the radius is, so that when people are turning, um, you don't have the headlights out on thirty-five, and it also creates a buffer there for the neighbors across the street, but there's really no one like occupying this space, so I feel like it is a good alignment there. Finally, drive-through two, um, these are the markers, this is the alignment. It aligns with their, um, detached garage or barn. Then, we do have some landscaping that's kind of, there is a home here, but I, from being out there and looking at where it was located, I don't think, it's, I don't think there will be headlights in the front window. But, so I'm not recommending any mitigation me- measures, but, you know, as we talked about before, we have the tree there, and so I think that that actually will help mitigate it if there are any concerns. So, um, that's a summary of my report, and.
Hey Katie, can I interrupt you fast?
Yeah.
I've got a couple landscaping questions for you quick. So, so going back, so with the changes that we made, I mean, putting in the evergreen greens, we're removing some shrubs and trees.
No, it's, it's, uh, just exactly like it's on the plan.
Right, but I'm saying if we're replacing the honey locust with evergreens, we've got, so in the landscape plan, we're showing things underneath them that would get killed by the honey locust, or by the evergreens, right? I mean, if we plant a big evergreen over the top of them, they're gonna die.
Yeah.
So we've got some things that we're pulling out of the plan, so why don't we move those to the bald spot?
So, we actually already approved the landscape plan, so we can't go back now.
Yeah, right, so, but.
I, I think, you know, Rusty wants to make some changes that make sense, that don't take away the mitigation measures. That's something we can look at in the future. I think likely there might be some changes anyway with the walkway, and if he talks to his landscapers and they say, hey, with this big tree here, we can't have the shrubs, he'll have to come back to us, and, and we'll look at the changes.
Francis building, I, when we get there, I am more than happy to walk it with the Planning Commission.
Right.
Just like we did here, we laid all the bushes out prior to planting them. We wanna schedule a meeting with the Planning Commission, so we can, you know, tweak it. You can do whatever, maybe you want a few more here, a few more there. I'm willing to do that. But to talk about it right now without standing there, I, I think the right amount of shrubs are there, the right amount of trees are there. If you guys wanna tweak them in the future, you put it on the minutes, I'll be more than happy to schedule it with you. We'll walk it, we'll get it exactly like you like.
No, no, and I can understand that concern. It's kinda the same from our side, though, to approving something that we don't have all the details for, where, where we don't have sidewalks and different things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, but we're, we missed that window.
Well, I guess, uh, did we, we approved the landscape plan, and it says he's gonna have this number of shrubs, right? So if they're under the evergreen tree, we're gonna shift them somewhere and move them around, so.
I mean, it's common sense, I mean, that's just common sense.
There's still, he's still gotta do the same number of shrubs and that.
Okay, fair, perfect.
Awesome. Conditional use permit, Katie.
Yep, hold on one sec.
While you pull that up, I just think that like, doing this headlight study, Katie, like, it's above and beyond. Thank you for like your work. I know that this job can be thankless sometimes, and I know that like, you like do your absolute best to get us to follow like our codes and state statutes, so like, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, McKenna, I appreciate that, and I would just like to say thank you to the applicant, because I feel like they really did the most work here. This is above and beyond what we normally have asked for in the past in this situation, but I think it made sense here. And they went out, did the survey, and got the stakes in, my part was pretty minimal, but thank you for taking the time to do that and for addressing the concerns. Okay.
So we made it through State Road thirty-five, or we, or do we have one more?
Yeah, so let me just type real quick here, and then we'll keep moving on.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. So, um, next, looking at the architectural, this is the next part I would wanna talk about, because there were some questions and changes here. Um, so, last time, we were concerned that the applicant submitted a plan for a four-story hotel, and our code allows three stories. And I think I gave an update on this last time, that code amendment was tabled at City Council. They are, they had a tie vote, and it's going back to council, um, on Thursday, the thirteenth. So right now, we're still kind of in limbo. We don't know if we're gonna be three or four stories allowed. So I asked the applicant to, uh, get me a rendering of a three-story, and let's see, so they said that, let me just find this in my report and just read it from here. Um, there, they said that this is the alternate plan for a three-story. It's similar on the outside to the four-story, like actually the same. Um, there are no changes to the exterior of the building. On the interior. Yeah, so on the interior, this is what they're planning, if the four-story doesn't get approved, that they will have unfinished attic space. Um, the number of rooms would be reduced from sixty-seven with four stories to forty-six with three stories. Uh, then that also reduces the parking requirements, so if they're not planning, they're not planning to change the parking lot, they're still going to seek a shared parking agreement with the city. Um, we've worked out some of the details of the shared parking agreement, there's a draft in Dropbox if you're interested in looking at it. Uh, but it's still a little bit, uh, you know, we've met, we talked about it for a while, and we're, the attorneys are working out some of the details on. I think we've, I got to an agreement of what that would look like, twenty-three stalls, but we have a few things to do before that's signed. The twenty-three stalls includes ten trailer truck stalls. Uh, so on the site plan, they're showing a hundred and seventy stalls. So a hundred and seventy, uh, that includes just parking in the front of the building, and includes all the parking behind, and then the ADA. So, let's see. I broke down, like, if they had three stories or four stories, there is a table on the staff report if you. I broke down, like if they had three stories or four stories, there is a table on the staff report if you want to see all the numbers. But if they have a three-story building, then they're required to have a hundred and fifty-one stalls at town center. And they have a hundred and seventy, so they're good there. And if they have four stories, they'd be required to have a hundred and sixty-six and they have a hundred and seventy.
So, that's including the fifty-three reciprocal parking and the twenty-one shared or twenty-three shared.
Twenty-three shared.
Now, I get reciprocal, right, like I understand maybe five or six reciprocal, but fifty-three?
So if they had a three-story, then they would have, they could have up to a twenty-five percent reciprocal reduction. So to me, that looked like they could have fifty-seven, they have to prove, they have to come back to us. We're not, we're not approving this reciprocal reduction tonight. What we're do, if they want to qualify for reciprocal reductions, they have to come back to us and ask for that. They have to prove that they have daytime uses and nighttime uses that do not overlap. It's something that our code allows, it's not something we have to worry about tonight. We're just being aware that this is something that they're planning on being able to use. And it's a tool that's in the toolkit for them, but they have to come back to us. We're not approving it tonight, we're not, we don't know what those businesses will be at this point exactly. We know some of them, but we don't know all of them. So we need other pieces to that puzzle to be able to figure out if we're gonna even allow reciprocal here. So if he comes back and says, hey, I want reciprocal and we don't feel like it meets the requirements, then we can deny that. And he takes a risk of not being able to have a business license because he doesn't have enough parking. That's a risk that the applicant is taking, we're acknowledging it here, we're not approving it at this point. Does that make sense?
It does, thank you.
Okay, let me keep going. So, looking at the detrimental effects, the hotel, we're expecting those to be decreased privacy, additional noise and outdoor lighting. Feel like these effects can be mitigated with the proposed eight-feet concrete wall and tree buffer on the adjoining residential property line. Also mitigating noise by only allowing deliveries between nine AM and seven PM. Before in my staff report, I had that as seven AM and seven PM, but I just felt like it should be nine to seven. That's similar to what we did with the Best Western, so I think it should be the same. So nine to seven would be my recommendation. There, you know, I think that on the adjoining residential property, they'll be able to see the upper floors of the hotel, even with the tree buffer. But, the hotel is pretty much the farthest point from that adjoining residence. It's five hundred and fifty feet, that's a pretty significant distance. So that distance will help mitigate that concern. Okay, moving on to the drive-throughs. We talked about the light study, otherwise it's the same, same conditions, same analysis as before. So I think that brings us to like kind of the end of my staff report. I will pull up my recommendations when we get to the point of making motions, just to make that easier. Scott, did you have anything to add? No. We don't have a public hearing on this tonight because we had one in January for this item, so. That's it for me.
So to be clear, the vote is on the conditional use permit for the hotel.
The others were broken out, I'm sorry, I can't flip back and forth. The others were broken out for the two restaurants.
Yeah, so we've got three conditional uses, one for the hotel, one for drive-through one and one through drive-through two. I also added a condition on drive-through two, you might remember this from last time, that their HVAC equipment has to be placed as far from the residence that's adjoining as possible, just to help with the noise issues.
So right now, we're voting on the hotel.
The conditional use, and remember, it's a positive or a negative recommendation for all of these conditional uses.
So I called the state in regards to the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
And they said that it is true that a conditional use permit will override a city's conditional use permit, but it won't override the city code. So from the training that we had, we have to vote no.
Okay, I'm not quite sure I understand, can you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah.
So who did you call, the state?
Marcy Ombudsman.
Oh, the property rights ombudsman?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep, and I discussed it with her.
Okay.
And so we should be sticking with the original city code, that we don't allow a twenty-four-hour, seven-day business hour business near residential.
Nathan Bracken, counsel for Rusty Webster. I also, I'm on the Ombudsman's advisory board, can you clarify? So are you saying that, just for the record, that the old code trumps state law?
I'm not saying it trumps anything, it stands alone. If we did have a conditional use permit, if we voted it in, then the state would override our conditional use permit. But as it is right now, our city code is lawful and it, it stands.
Okay, so.
To what extent, what, what code are we talking about?
So, I think, are you trying to say that our, our zoning code takes precedence over a conditional use?
Right.
Okay, so you're not referring to state law?
No, I think she's referring to her own code, which code would take precedence within our, our own code.
Okay, thank you.
So there's, they said that our zoning code takes precedence over our conditional use.
If we had a conditional use, then it would, but since we don't, since we're trying to vote it in, it doesn't.
Okay. So, yeah, I haven't heard that before, I'm not gonna comment on that, because I, I just don't know. But, okay, we can take that into consideration. And is this, this is regarding the twenty-four-hour business?
Right. Near.
Okay. So, I know we talked about this a lot in the last meeting.
We can always table it, but.
No, I don't think that's necessary, I think that we could pass it to the city council with a negative recommendation if we needed to and we just explain that. And then I believe the city attorney will be at the council meeting and if he wants to advise on it, he can.
Yeah.
What he's told me and what we've reflected in the staff report is that in our state, in our city code, we have some language that says, you know, that, the, it's not a twenty-four-hour business, but that's basically what it is, is like, that can't be located near residential. And our city attorney feels like that is not objective because it doesn't set a distance. It, what is near to me might be different than what it is to you, Kim, like there might be different ways to interpret that.
I understand there's multiple ways to interpret it. And so maybe we should, like you said, send it forward to city council with negative and then Brad can advise on how they want to discuss near.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. The place where it gets, you know, tricky with state code is state code that says we can have conditional uses, but we have to have objective conditions. So that's where like, that's not quite objective, so we don't know that we can hold that condition. But I am fine if you feel more comfortable with the negative and sending that to council, yeah.
So just so I understand, so under your C code, under eighteen fifty-seven zero-two-zero, correct me if I'm wrong, Katie, you're more of an expert than I am. When it comes to the city center zone, a hotel is specifically listed as a conditional use.
Correct.
Right, and so hotels are by their nature twenty-four-hour in nature. So are you then saying that there's another provision outside of the city center code that prohibits a twenty-four-hour business that's in conflict?
I believe there is one, yes.
Okay, and so what you're then saying is, even though your code says in the conditional use permit that a hotel is a, is a conditional use, is allowed in the city center zone, that this other conflicting provision controls?
Right.
Yeah, the other issue is that if you look at our zoning map, all of our commercial and city center areas are near residential, so it does conflict.
But they're not adjacent, they're not on top of each other, they're not touching each other.
We, we have no residential residence.
Except for across the street.
There might be residential, but the zoning is not.
You have apartments on top of the building.
What's that?
You have apartments on top of the building.
I think you're confusing the zoning though.
Yeah, yeah, that's multi-use, I mean, that's where.
It's zone, all the houses are zoned commercial, so someday, in the distant future, when they move or they sell or they do whatever, they'll be, they'll be businesses. That's, that's what he's saying.
Yeah, and I'll need to talk to Marcy at my next board meeting with the Ombudsman's office because I'm curious about her thinking on this. But you, your code specifically allows for a hotel in your conditional use permit. And I, I would, basically, when you approved that, you approved a hotel. You may have this other provision, but I would argue you have to read these two in harmony, which is usually what the statutory rules of construction says, the more specific controls. It sounds like you have a more general code provision that talks about distances to twenty-four-hour businesses, but you allowed a hotel as a conditional use.
So I think we'd say the opposite where that's the more specific one. And when you look at this at a whole, your argument says that we can't have any other code sections that contradict the conditional use, and that's clearly just fallacious. Based on that, if that was our position, our sewage code wouldn't be applicable because we have conditional use permit. Our fire code wouldn't be applicable because this is a conditional use. You're arguing that all of our other code falls by virtue of this being a conditional use and that's just erroneous.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that when you adopted, I'm, by the way, I'm city attorney for the other towns, Rusty's really the only developer I represent, so I'm usually on your side of the aisle with this. But you've allowed a hotel and motel in your conditional use code.
Sure.
It's a conditional use and under state law, if we can meet and mitigate the adverse, the raids, the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects, which your staff report says we can, the requirement is you shall approve those uses that are in your conditional use table. So I haven't been involved with the discussion with Marcy, I'll follow up with her separately. But it's in your code, it says it's a conditional use, that it can be approved and it needs to be approved with state law. If you have another provision that conflicts, I, I mean, I guess there's a difference of opinion, but when I spoke with Brad yesterday about this, he was of the opinion that a hotel is, is a, a conditional use, it's allowed in the city center zone. And this other section of the code doesn't really apply, doesn't say how it applies to the code, it doesn't, is there a distance limitation on it?
Well, that's, that's the issue, that's, that's the issue. And I have had this conversation with our own city attorney multiple times and he has explained it the same way you have.
Okay, thank you.
So, I guess one, one more thing. It, sir, if you mind, I guess you're here. Let's get all your question, all the questions for you out of the way.
Sure.
So then we can focus on the business at hand.
Yep.
Do you have more questions for the council?
I have five comments, I have no questions for the council.
Okay, does anybody have any more questions for council representing Mr. Webster? Okay, outstanding.
Katie, I do have a question for the record, what is this, the citation to this other code provision?
Kobe, don't you know it?
Thank you.
That is correct, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Kim, did you have more?
On the hotel?
On the conditional use permit for the hotel.
No, ooh, choose me.
Why not? All right, five bullet points, let's hear them.
Okay, one, four stories. Our code currently does not allow for four stories. I think you, yep.
Let's stay with us, this is the conversation between us, that's what I was trying to kill.
Okay, for sure.
Go ahead, have a seat.
Okay, first off, four stories. Our code doesn't currently allow for four stories. And so to me, this is an actor who is really trying to push the envelope and really trying to circumnavigate our code by saying, well, because your height allows for a certain height, which I think allows for some architectural features, some differences, some beautification of a building. Instead, what this actor is trying to do is circumnavigate it, put four-story building. And, and yeah, to me, it really shows the intentions of the actor.
Okay, can I hold you right there?
Yeah, go for it, I'll get on to my next one later.
No, no, I know, I'm not, I just want to, like, I think we need to settle this. It's been made abundantly clear that we can make a recommendation about three or four stories and we've taken that piece and we've sent that to city council.
Yep.
They've tabled it because they had a split vote.
Yep.
There is no reason we can't add a caveat to what we're voting on today for a conditional use permit, that it meets the code that's approved by the city council. So us arguing over renderings that are four or three stories seems silly when that's already gonna be a mitigating factor in the, in the thing. And Katie's kind of addressed this by saying, send us the plans for the three, does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that.
No, but argue with me, like, if you think I'm wrong, but.
No, that totally makes sense, I think it's gonna bleed into my other points. For me, what it's showing is that it's showing the intentions of the actor.
I don't care about his intentions, though, I care about the law.
I, absolutely, absolutely. I also would love to see like good partnerships within the city of Francis and people who are willing, like, to me, there's some noticeable differences between the other hotel proposal we had, which came in like six months prior to actually coming in, really like got, asked for community feedback. A ton of it was negative, and so they did try to mitigate that through landscaping, through berms. Like, they, to me, that is going above and beyond and like, not just, we meet the code, you have to approve us. That is showing like good intent, good partnership.
I guess, hold on, he didn't agree to yours, but he agreed to all of mine.
For what, landscaping?
Yeah.
You're right, does this bring in other issues?
I'm just telling you that I think you're looking, I just think you're looking at this from a narrow way because you got told he's not gonna put more plants in the corner. He put in a concrete fence, which is what I asked for and didn't get it at Best Western. He changed to evergreens, which I asked for without even blinking.
Yeah.
So like, I'm just saying, like, I don't know.
That is weird.
I don't know that, I don't know that you're looking at this through the lens because I feel like your idea's been shut down, but all of mine have been.
Yeah, I think that that is like actually a really good point. And I would be interested in why one commissioner's requests are all getting approved and not another's commissioner's.
I don't know what I do.
You're, you're fine.
So.
Maybe I'm nicer, I don't know. Go on to the next one, but I just wanted to point out that several things have been approved that we've asked for.
That you've asked for.
And I feel like all the things, and you. You, you just got your cluster of bushes, you didn't like your cluster of bushes and now he's.
Rich didn't like the cluster, he wanted a trade, I wanted a taller trade.
You guys didn't like your cluster of bushes and then he ju, he put the bushes in and then he just agreed to change the bushes, so like, I don't understand where you're getting this view.
Okay, okay, sounds good, that's fine, I, I can see where I'm getting the view. And I think that there may be others that can also see that, but, okay. Then, so the first access point, so, let's see. In the staff report, he said that he will discuss mitigation measures and pay for landscaping berms. If the, that access point, because right now, while we're looking at the.
Spring Hollow?
Yeah, so it's the first location, it's the only location that's actually going to be affected by like headlights pulling out.
Got it, okay.
In the front, yeah. And so with that, if, if there, so they said that they're willing to discuss mitigation measures and pay for landscaping barriers or whatever the language was. And so with that, I would want that in writing that the, the current residents, the current owner agrees to that, those mitigation measures, instead of it moving access points.
Well, but so Katie's already just told you that we can't enforce conditional use permits as a government, as a governing body on private property.
Right.
So that's what she's saying, I have no doubt she's already contacted an attorney, but she's saying, she's saying it's a very nice offer and he's offered to do that, but there's no, we have no legal ramifications as a city of Francis on someone else's property for Rusty's conditional use permit.
So, the point of conditional use permits is because the city acknowledges that there may be detrimental effects to these uses that are being proposed. And so what we basically said as a city is, yes, if a hotel is allowed, it's allowed, but we think that there may be enough like negative things that happen because of this, this occupation, this business coming in. And so in order to mitigate them, we want to take that one by one specialized and bring it before a board, a body
Agreed.
in order to mitigate those. So for me, what I'm seeing is that there's a current resident, residents existing. A current residents, not a proposal, and so right now, we have the opportunity to help mitigate those negative factors.
Let me, but let's boil this down.
That, isn't that what I just boiled it down to?
Hold on, though, I, I'm gonna rephrase what I said and try and do it in a different way.
Okay.
We, as a governing body, can make recommendations to mitigate factors on property that the applicant owns.
Great, so my recommendation.
So what do you, what is your recommendation? You, you can't make a recommendation that he does landscaping on private property. That makes absolutely no sense.
Okay, I make a recommendation that he move the access point.
Scott's already said he doesn't want the access point moved, he would prefer it as far away from the intersection as possible and there's no other place to move it along that point, which wouldn't involve the same issues, that's what Katie just covered.
I disagree, I think he could move it, I think it could be moved right here. It could be right there.
You're gonna need to refer to Scott.
We, we looked at that and anywhere you move it, there's houses across the street. So it's gonna, lights are gonna go in no matter where you put it.
But if you move it right there, the only house that's across the street. But if you move it right there, the only house that's across the street is-
You can't move it to the corner. The highway is not going to allow you to have an entrance at the corner of an intersection.
We don't want an intersection that close to another intersection.
Okay, so-
So, hold on, but do you understand what I'm saying?
Justin, yes, I understand what you're saying, but you're not listening to me. What I'm saying is because of the proposal of the building, because I have a hard time believing some of the intentions of this developer.
Who cares?
Is that, listen, just listen to me for one second before interrupting, okay? Is that what I would like to see is that they get something in writing, like, and that this, this property owner acknowledges, like, hey, yeah, we're going to be contacted by this developer to help mitigate these lights that are going to be shown in our property because our city engineer, because the, the planning commission approved this site plan. We're trying to mitigate it. Something in writing. I don't feel like that's a huge ask.
I don't think you legally can.
I wish we had a city attorney.
Then what's the point of the planning commission?
I think that this is squarely outside of our purview. What you're talking about is not within the scope of what we should be doing, at all.
So, so when staff report says that they've talked to, let's see, let me pull it up.
I volunteered.
That's, yeah, that was added as like a gesture of good faith. It's not enforceable.
What the staff report says is that, the staff report's determination is that all these concerns have been properly mitigated.
Heart development, did they come back because there was some well issues? That the state came back to the property owners, that there was, that they didn't have water rights to their wells because there were water shares that were used?
Heart crossing?
Yeah.
There's no wells in heart-
Hidden meadows.
Over my meadow house.
Hidden meadows.
And again, again, guys, like, why are we way off on hidden meadows?
You can't happen to answer it.
But, yeah, I, I understand that, I understand that, but it's not relevant.
It's not relevant.
It's none of, it's, has nothing to do with the conditional use permit here. I, I understand that, and that's my point, is that it's inappropriate, and we're discussing a conditional use permit. We're, no, it's, no, we're not going to have this back and forth between the client. We're just not, or the applicant. We're going to address the conditional use permits and the features that are addressed by law. If you can't cite how it doesn't meet these mitigation requirements in writing, you're opening up the city the liability. That's, that's the whole point. And so we make recommendations to put in barriers so that we block the light. We make recommendations to do all these things. That is the purview of this group.
We should just vote on a motion so that it can go before the city council, and they can get Brad's recommendation and the state on how they want to handle our code, and then move on.
I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
So I vote to, and I hope I say this right.
Motion.
I motion to negatively recommend the conditional use permit for the hotel.
And you need to say why.
I need a second, because of our city code.
No, you cannot.
There's an error in the delivery hours that she made her, allowed into three.
Okay, please email the city.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just need a second, right?
I second the motion.
I agree with the motion. Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Let Katie type.
And we're citing the negative recommendation. Well, I'll get, I'll, I can go back and listen to that part. That's not as important. Okay, let's go ahead and do the vote.
I support the motion.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, next item on the agenda.
So we still need to talk about the conditional use permits for the two drive-through restaurants.
Correct.
So-
I feel like that Katie has changed delivery hours and HVAC. We've adjusted the landscape plan to address that.
Let me pull those up, make sure I, we did get the delivery hours wrong. Let's go ahead and fix it right now.
Okay.
Let me see, staff report. Okay. Sorry.
It's okay, I have it up. That's the one.
There we go. All right, so it looks like we've got hours of operation, 5:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Delivery hours, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., 5:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Okay, and then if they were on the hotel, it wouldn't be, those look good. Okay, we should probably add the delivery hours to that, but it's a negative recommendation, so I'll just add that to the city council's report. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so here's my recommendation for the drive-throughs. They're slightly different. I mentioned before, condition five on drive-through two is mechanical equipment being as far from the building as, from the residence as possible.
Are we doing each one separately?
We do have to do that separately.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Um, did you need to read anything? Are we good, Katie?
No, I think I've covered everything already.
I think that staff has addressed the requests from the last meeting and included those in this. The only thing, I mean, I'm just trying to look. I, I mean, it's captured in the landscape plan, so, um, I don't think we need to specifically spell out that it's an evergreen as opposed to a cluster at this point. You think, you feel good about that, Katie?
Um, yeah, I will put that recommendation, well, we changed it in the landscape plan, so I'll just, I will change it before it goes to city council. I'm going to write it on here because I'll look back at this, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So given, given that, I feel like we've addressed the concerns that were presented before. That's all I have to say. Uh, Scott?
I do have one question. So there's drive-through one and drive-through two.
Yep.
If memory serves, we're looking at the map, the overlay, drive-through one is one on one.
That's correct, yep, so drive-through one is here, drive-through two is here.
Okay, so because we're treating them differently.
One and two.
Separately, right?
Two separate applications here.
So when you go back to the text that you just had before?
Oh, oh, sorry, guys, we didn't even cover this architecture. I kind of looked at that one page. Let me just show you this, not that it matters now, but there you go. Yeah, you did. Yeah, they did, I did print it for them, so they had it. That's probably why we didn't even come across that. Here's the wording, okay.
So I'm just asking, so number one, both of them are identical, but is number one for restaurant one even relevant? Because is it the precast wall associated with only number two? Or is there a second wall in between them?
I think it should still be relevant because if something happens down the line to drive-through two, and say, they change that into not a drive-through restaurant, and they lose that conditional use somehow, then we still want to make sure that drive-through one requires it, say, 25 years down the road. We still want to require that that's there.
I just want to understand that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, so I'll just, I can, that's my comment, so do you want to run through and see if we have comments?
Yeah, I think we need to go, no, I mean, let's go down the line. McKenna, what do you got? Nothing?
No.
Kim, nothing?
I got nothing.
Nothing? I'll entertain a motion.
To what?
For drive-through one?
To move, to approve the application for drive-through one with the conditions noted in the text that's on the screen.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay.
Positively recommend.
I will second. Still thinking about it. Let others go first. Okay, let's vote this way.
Aye.
I'm still thinking about it.
Okay, well, you guys let me know when you're ready to vote.
If you feel like you want to talk about this, we can, um-
So I just want to make sure I can, I was a little bit hasty in voting on the landscaping plan, so I just want to make sure I'm-
parsing through things adequately.
Rich has got PTSD.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is through, for drive-through one only. The hotel, not relevant so much here.
You weren't here for the first round, were you? No. That hence, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Well, I think he was here in January.
He was.
Not for, not last week.
Oh, okay, yeah, you missed the other one.
Got it.
Last question while we're waiting.
Yeah.
So this rendering here, this is the front, thank you for producing this. This is what I, I know, of course, so thank you, yeah. I am curious. Um, it appears that the facade down 35, so down this direction, that there's those four different peaks. I'm just curious, is that the drive-throughs there, meaning do, do the high points, are they identical to this area that's closest to the building? Does it look the same on the way down?
That, that is a third-story apartment.
Down this end, right here?
Yeah, so, so all of the commercial has got the third-story apartments, that's the hotel, okay.
So you see what I'm saying? Now, you can see it looks different here on the right side because of the variation of the hotel and all that. But on the left side, just from this perspective, it appears to be essentially identical.
That's true.
I'm just wondering if there is elevation changes because typically, a drive-through restaurant isn't also-
Yeah, so, so it's kind of hard to, you know, there's, so the drive-throughs below, ground level.
Yeah.
And then there's apartments above, so that architectural, so, so, so there is apartments above the drive-through.
And that's what I was worried, just because, just the way it looks there appears that way. I just wanted to make sure.
They don't look like drive-throughs.
Okay, oh, it's okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and so then the, the things that, the conditions that we asked for were the rock wall on the east side, we asked for trees, evergreen, green trees.
And then we, well, evergreen trees both on the east side and the drive-through to mitigate headlights.
Okay. And those were reflected in the landscape plan.
Yep, and then the HVAC for two be moved as far away from the residence to the east as possible.
Okay.
So do you want me to pull that up, and we can type in some updates there? So we'll probably need a new motion then.
I, I think you motioned with the staff report.
Yeah, and I think-
What's the cleanest way for your notes, Katie?
So some of this just might not have gotten reflected, and, like, it was discussed in my report. I will add it on here, um, that we were going to add that, either the evergreen tree, is that we're talking about?
We have, we have two, two sets of evergreen trees. East wall is an evergreen tree adjacent to the cinder, or the precast cement. And then swap out the cluster for a solid evergreen.
Yes, and so that's already on the landscape plan, but we'll record it on here, the conditions, just in case there's any questions later. We want it all to be succinct. Mm-hmm.
And then for cleanliness sake, how do we kill our vote that's pending? Or do we just need to clean up this and we're still good?
I think we could amend it.
Okay, so are, let me say this, is there more to be discussed?
Or we can just start over if we want to let that one die. We can let it start, we can start over. Let's just do that.
I think, let's just let it die.
Okay.
And then, now that Rich has just said he's good. This is why I'm, I'm trying to avoid those 30 pagers because boy, it took me forever to read January. Yeah. Um, do you have more? You have nothing. Do you have more, McKenna?
No, I think I've been adequately silenced.
Okay.
So I guess we're going to repeat the same one, Scott, with the conditions as outlined by-
Is it because of the, well, we don't have a, could you adjust it just directly in here now?
Well, this is actually a PDF, so I just wrote notes on here for the evergreen tree and then the, um, the tree that's going to be on the drive-through.
The cluster and the-
It's not the cluster anymore.
Not the cluster.
The six-foot-plus tree on the drive-through radius.
So are you entertaining a motion?
I am, I am entertaining a motion.
So I will try again, making a motion to positively recommend the conditional use permit for drive-through restaurant number one with the notations here in the PDF and the handwritten notations about the two things that Katie just mentioned. Is that sufficient, since you already have that part on the record? Just a second.
So with the staff conditions and notations about the-
Trees.
evergreen trees. On landscape buffer and drive-through radius. Got it. Okay, so that was Commissioner Buchanan's motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
And then we'll vote. Scott?
Aye.
You want to vote?
Yeah, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, aye.
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 Okay.
Okay, so there was one abstaining, and the rest were yay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't, I feel like we've discussed drive-through two simultaneously, but they're obviously different condition use permits. Does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss so that way we don't end up with a dead motion again?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Katie, do you mind going to the screen that shows the parking behind the drive-throughs one and two, please?
Yeah, happy to. Okay, so you want the site plan version of that, or?
Not, um, okay, yeah.
Okay.
So if the hotel goes in.
Yeah.
If it goes in, and you have all this parking behind two drive-throughs. I just don't see how people are going to be able to go into both drive-throughs and pull out of a parking stall for the hotel. I think there's too much traffic. I think there's too much congestion. I, I think it's an accident or several waiting to happen. I think it's just too dense to have a second drive-through right there. And there's not enough parking. And possibly, and I just want to say, I respect Mr. Webster and what he wants to do with his property. As a business owner, I would want to get the, the most bang for my buck as well, and I appreciate all he's trying to do here, but I, I think there's just, it's one bridge too far. Um, I think possibly giving that space up for parking would help him not need to get reciprocal parking or city parking. I don't know how much you can get out of there, um, but I just think that will help mitigate the parking issue by not having a second drive-through there.
Okay, so I guess we would need, in order to move with a negative recommendation, we would need to attach that to some unmitigated thing. Am I saying this correctly, Scott?
Yeah, so the question I would have is what, your comment, is that relevant to this application, right? Is that connected directly to that as opposed to some other aspect of the site plan that potentially has already been approved or referred to council, right? If you have to list precisely what it is that we're approving or not approving, I don't know if what you just said goes beyond that.
I'm not appro, I'm not approving the second drive-through.
Okay, sure.
Because of the amount of traffic, the lack of parking, that the plan doesn't have.
I guess my question that I would pose, and maybe it's to you, Katie, is, does that concern, I would like to know before there was a vote, does that concern connect to this conditional use application?
Um, I think that, when I can pull up the standards, I think there could. Uh, one thing I'd point out to consider is that the applicant could put a building there that's not a drive-through or a conditional use. And if it all, if it's allowable and it meets our requirements, then it would be allowed. Because we, you know, if he's meeting the parking requirements, then-
Are there flows of traffic to be considered with the drive-through?
Let's pull up the standards and look at those.
So like, if one is an In-N-Out and one's a Chick-fil-A, and both of those have pretty long lines?
Yeah, I don't think we get that specific in our code.
Yeah, our code's specific, it prohibits, did you?
Our, our Francis City code, you know, we're, uh, this is not something that we've really anticipated would be like a Chick-fil-A. I don't, I, yeah, I understand, like, that would be the worst-case scenario. I don't think that's what's planned, but I do understand your concern, Kim, so. Oh, I went too far. Okay. Went too far.
I mean, if we got an In-N-Out burger, people would drive from Park City and Heber to come here.
I would die for an In-N-Out.
Right? I mean, like, I want him to be successful.
We'd have to shut down the city.
Okay, so here are the standards when we look at a conditional use. There, you know, I think that it could kind of apply to-
Traffic considerations?
Yep, traffic, amount of off-street parking, which in this case doesn't, isn't quite there.
The internal traffic circulation?
Internal traffic circulation is probably the one that's most related on number two. So I think that answers your question, like, yeah, it's something we can consider.
So then the follow-on I would have to that, okay, so it's within the purview. But then there's a staff report. So then, the follow-on I would have to that, okay, so it's within the purview, but then there's a staff report utilizing different resources.
Yeah.
Scott, that have addressed this, right?
So Scott, yeah, this is something that Scott has addressed, you wanna jump in here?
Um, drive-throughs are a city engineer's nightmare, because you just don't know. But we don't have anything in our code that says you can't, um, they have the parking stalls that required. Is there gonna be a car sitting there in front of that parking stall twenty-four hours a day? Probably not, so it can be used. So, are they meeting their requirements for parking stalls? Yes, is, um, like you say, if somebody brings a Chick-fil-A and an In-N-Out. That would be, it would never work there, In-N-Out would never come there, Chick-fil-A would probably never come there, 'cause they don't have, um, the room. The In-N-Out down in American Fork has expanded their drive-through two or three times to try and make it work, and they still have people to park out on the street, that sit out on the street to get to it. It's just, with the standards we have, it, they've got the parking stalls. Is there gonna be a car parked in front of it? I can't guarantee it that it's not, but they meet the requirements. So how do you, how do you say this, um, will allow this, um, drive-through, it can be, uh. I don't know, what's not popular, Burger King.
That the condition is that it can only be an unpopular.
It can only, it can only be a Burger King, this one can be that, you, we, we can't do that, it's, um. They've, they've got a queue for their, um, for their drive-through, um, people can get around. Their circulation, there's other places they can drive through, um, it's just, it's just hard to, there's not anything in our city code. That says you have to have this for a drive-through.
No.
So, with what we have, they've got circulation, they can drive around, they can go around different places. Now, if there's cars parked there and, um, this guy decides to park way over against this car, it, it could block some things off. But it's, they've got circulation through the, through the parking lots. Now, if it gets really busy and they're really slow, like, some, um, some drive-throughs are, it could be a problem. But that's gonna be, um, a detriment to their business, so they, they don't wanna see that, so they're gonna wanna keep things moving through, so. It's, it's just hard, and with what our city code says, I don't know how we say that, because it's a drive-through, you can't have a parking stall there.
So where, when we have this kind of a discussion, the point where I get a little lost is that if the staff report's perspective is. This is, um, how staff believes this is gonna function, right? When we in turn say that there's a negative recommendation for that, that it has to be based on some kind of information that we have. I get that it would be personal opinion, I think that's when you would vote no, but I don't know how you would impose some recommendation. When the staff report would not support it on its face.
They don't meet the parking already, they don't meet parking.
It's a different.
But it's still, is impacted by the, and it, it's still impacted by the drive-through.
See, the, the problem with.
And he's not sure, he just said it's an engineer's worst nightmare.
This is where objectivity and subjectivity come into play, right, like, and this was the whole discussion our last meeting with, with our code. That we were saying, no, it's obsolete because it's, uh, it's subjective instead of being objective. This, where we don't have the exact buildings, we don't know the exact amount of cars that are gonna come through, right now, this is subjective. And so it leaves room for us as a body to decide, as a body, based in our various dis- experiences. It's a conditional use permit to allow us to mitigate it, it's not an, a, a permitted use, which would just go through the city. And so, as a body, we take our collective experiences and we say, in our expertise, yeah, this is going to have an impact. And this is, these are the conditions we're adding, right, in addition to staff's expertise and what they're already adding. So I think we do have leverage and leeway to go ahead and say, hey, in our experience, we do wanna add another condition. Or we do wanna see this, or we don't think that this'll work, so.
So, so here's my question, so if we were, Katie, could you pull back the site plan up again? Go back to that page?
Yep.
And zoom in a little bit on the parking right in front of those. So, I'm down on that island, so if we were to flip the location of the island, would that mitigate some of the concern? Right, so if we have those stalls facing south instead of facing north, and so then there'd be room for cars to wrap around without obstructing parking?
That goes into fire.
Okay.
Yeah, that goes into safety issues, the way that, that is the parking, the, 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 the drive-through, the main roads are all laid out.
So, I, I see where Rich is coming from, moving just that island, just to the top of those parking stalls. Keeping all of the access roads the same width, that would still impact fire code?
Yeah, so here, Rusty, let me show you what I mean, so this, right here, so right this drive-in, you've got all this weight. But so if you move this island up to there, so everything's the same width, you just have the stalls facing a different direction.
Parking the other way? Cause I, I, I don't know what is gonna change, uh.
I, I mean, then you could have cars queue up in front of the building and they're not blocking parking spaces. I'm just asking, does that address people's concerns, is that?
Hang on, I'm lost.
So, I. Cause right now the concern is, so if this drives through, if you've got, it's In-N-Out, we've got a bajillion cars, and they're lined up here, now effectively, we don't have parking. Right, and this happens all the time in San Diego, you get stuck in there and you're waiting for a half hour. And so, so that's the current concern, is that even though these are parking spaces, they're not really, because if this is a successful, a successful business, we all hope it is, people can't use them. And so my question was, well, if you move this island to right here, so we flip the way the parking spaces are oriented.
Okay, and so.
But how do you?
And so, hold on, hold on, hold on, and so Rusty, what I'm hearing Rusty say is that potentially you couldn't get a fire truck around to the building?
I mean, I guess if you just flop it, it would, I mean, Scott would no better, I, I, I just don't, I guess I'm trying to envision. How that would mitigate anything different than it's already been mitigated.
I agree with Rusty, I, I don't see, I mean, just because your Chick-fil-A is on the far side, that doesn't mean you're gonna drive around the island. You might still go in front of it next to the people that are.
Thought is just that instead of, that this, if it's flipped, would just prevent that long line of spots from being pinched in by the cars that are waiting for a line.
This is maybe the Pan Express, I mean, everything in Heber, if you wanna go down and see how it works, I mean, thi- this is exactly.
But it's not, because they all have an egress, no, I looked it up today, they each have an egress from the east side. They each have an egress on both sides of their properties.
No, they don't, no, one access.
But they're not competing with the hotel parking lot either.
Uh, and they've got, uh, all the big, big stores right there.
Not, not behind them, they're not sharing a parking.
Hold on, guys, like, this is the part that drives me a little crazy.
Yeah, it's.
It's not an arguing match with the applicant.
I agree.
We are able to ask the applicant questions, we are able to not like his answers, but let's not make it an arguing match. Do you have more questions?
No.
I, I'm not trying to shut you off, if you have more questions, ask them, I just, like, I just don't think it needs to be a bickering match with the applicants, I think it's unprofessional.
Yeah, I think that the applicant shouldn't bicker with us.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah.
Well, we left it with you, I think.
So that was just my question, is if that would address any concerns if we flopped the island? That seems like it, it doesn't address any concerns, so.
I thought it was a good idea.
Just trying to be creative.
Yeah, it was a creative solution.
I think one thing you could do is remove the island so that you can pull forward, or they can pull in both ways instead of. The island limits.
How many trees are on the island?
That gives us more trees.
Let's see, let's go back to that landscape plan.
Our landscape plan, I don't look at any islands.
Little ones, yeah, a couple on the ends.
But the landscaping, that's inside the development rather than outside for people to see, I mean.
Still important.
I agree, but. You could put some, I don't know.
One thing to consider to move it, is you're gonna create a tie radius to get out of that, getting out of that, it'll hit very, very tough, very hot people.
Or a car.
Yeah. Has everybody answered or discussed everything they wanna discuss, like, are we at a point where we can entertain a motion, like, I?
So Rusty, how do you feel about removing the island?
You know, I, I, I will say, I'm gonna listen to your recommendations, if you wanna, if you wanna form a recommendation to city council, I'll be more than happy to, to look at that with Cal. My civil and, and discuss it more with Scott, but, you know, I don't think I'm prepared to make that decision tonight.
Okay.
I, I am.
That's fair, I would want my engineer to look at it, too.
Table it?
No, we have to, that's part of that issue that we're, uh, I guess, I won't say feeling pressure on, but we need to be timely. Timely, is that the word I'm looking for, so like, even if it's not a positive recommendation, it still needs to be a timely one. So, I think part of our makeup is that we, we wanna feel like we're in unity to send something forward. And, and I think we should strive for that, but at the end of the day, if members aren't gonna agree, then members aren't gonna agree. And if I'm never gonna change your mind about something, or your mind, or Scott's mind, like, that's okay. I want opinions that come from different points of view and experience. If we were all the same up here, we would end up with all the same result, so please don't take any of my comments as killing your ideas. I struggle when people repeat themselves, and I struggle when, when things, I think, are black and white to me, maybe not to somebody else.
Yeah.
So, so I wanna be respectful of everybody's feelings, and I wanna encourage dialogue, but I also wanna be expedient and efficient. And, and sometimes I think we get way off topic, and we try to pull too many things in that aren't related to the single thing we're discussing. So we can do our best to rein in to the things that are on the table at the time, I think that's gonna help us move forward in a more efficient manner. It's gonna clean up the notes, it's gonna make life easier, it's gonna fulfill all of our public obligations. So, that being said, I am again willing to entertain a motion on drive-through number two. And I actually have no idea which way the wind's blowing, so I'm trying to avoid making duplicate motions, but, I mean, if that's what we need to do.
Do we, but first, is there anything we need to define the way we did for the first motion with respect to this motion and the extra text?
I think you could motion to, um, make the same changes that were made on the previous drive-through motion.
So, can we go back to the other, just the text and same complaint? So I'll make a motion to forward a positive recommendation for drive-through number two. The changes during the staff report and the changes that were discussed in our prior drive-through restaurant number one. Conditional permit, permit application. Did I get it right?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you wanna write it before I second it?
I think I got it with the same. I'll have to go back and listen, but I think I got the most important parts.
Oh, it didn't say on that, but it does on Katie's, that's weird.
Okay, I'm ready for a second.
I'll second.
Aye.
Uh, I abstain.
Aye.
No.
I'll be aye. Aye.
Okay, so just to, um, make sure I've got this, so Buchanan.
Aye.
Champy.
Aye.
And Christy Anderson.
Aye.
Yep. Um, McKenna, you abstained. And Lawson, you were in the name, okay, got it.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Joining the agenda. Oh, the heavy lifting is done.
Yeah.
Uh.
Probably for a while.
Does anybody have anything about the minutes? I read them, I felt like they were good.
Yeah, I did too.
As I say, you're English history, I, are we, are English major, we need you, you should read them for sure. Uh, so I'm gonna motion that we approve the minutes as written for.
February twentieth?
February twentieth, thanks, Katie, I was.
Thank you.
Need a second?
I second, okay.
Oh, no, please.
No, you, after you.
Oh, no, no, not your second!
Okay, who, who was it, who, Christy Anderson, we're gonna get to him, okay. Take a vote?
Aye.
I abstain, just kidding, aye.
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 All right, and with that, we'll kick it off for a staff update.
Yeah, hold on, let me catch up real quick. Okay, so, uh, we recently had a meeting, so I don't have much, um, we already talked about the email idea of. Rich, were you here when I, yeah, were you here when I talked about the emails and?
I wasn't.
Okay, good, okay, so I can give my whole spiel all over again. So, we were talking with our IT provider today, and we have some licensing fees that are coming up soon. For both of our, our Microsoft three sixty-five and our Okta, that's a, like, multi-factor authentication device we use. And those are coming up, it's kind of expensive for planning commission to have their own emails, for each person to have their own. And I know that you, a lot of you have had some difficulty with even accessing it. So I had an idea that instead of each having your own, that we would have one planning commission email, so that somebody could email the planning commission. I would take that and put it into Dropbox, either as like, just the mail Dropbox, email Dropbox, or maybe as applicable to each meeting. So that you're more likely to see it for that meeting, how do you all feel about that? It, I'm open to your thoughts on it.
Looking out for your sanity, what volume of emails are we talking about, 'cause you may hate your life if you volunteer to do that.
I don't think it's too many, and most of them, I already get copied to the comments email. I haven't seen your own personal emails, so maybe those of you that have seen it recently can tell me if it's a huge volume, but I don't think it is.
I was expecting to see like, well, the one when I finally got in and I got, I had like one.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, I think it's pretty minimal, so are you okay with proceeding with just one planning commission email?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it for me.
I have a, a comment, a suggestion, however you wanna word it, I don't think that we make motions in this realm. But I just would suggest, the next time that we are facing a similar heavy lifting schedule. That the city attorney be present.
Yeah.
Or they're designee, whoever, somebody that's able to.
We have an option virtually to Skype him in, 'cause I know he doesn't live up here.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The issue being that we are wrestling with some legal issues, we have council that's representing the developer. And particularly when they are also representing other municipalities, that, at least for me, and I work in government, that holds in sway. But at the same time, some of the stuff that we're dealing with is tricky from a legal aspect, and I would appreciate it if we had a little bit more support. On not every time, but thirty times that are tricky.
With our emails, let's put it.
Put it on this, so we can buy like two hours of Skype time, right?
Yep, yeah, I think that's, you know, something, I don't wanna say that, like, we have never thought of that. This is something we actually considered quite a bit coming into these conditional use permits. And in a lot of ways, I personally would really like that, because I feel like, that I have to a lot of times fill in those shoes. And it's not very comfortable, and it does take a lot of time for me to coordinate with the city attorney before the meeting, so that I know that I'm on the same page as him. So, in some ways, I really like that idea, I will say that, that was, that the, what, the feedback I got on that. Was that planning commission is an advisory board, and so, well, there will be the city attorney there for the council meetings in this case. About like, with the advisory board, we're not supposed to be setting any policy, and that it wouldn't, it wasn't necessary. But I definitely appreciate your comment, and I have similar sentiments, and, um, it is something that we discussed. And I will say that this, the last few meetings that we've been through, I've been the city planner for four and a half years. And, um, this has been the most intense planning commission meetings we've been, that I've been through since I came in. And I, before this, had never thought that that, it would be nice to have the city attorney at a planning commission meeting. So I, hopefully, we don't need that, but I will take it into consideration for the future.
Do we, just for my, um, curiosity, do we expect either project now to be coming back through the way it was?
No, no.
About heavy lifting, that's true, is that done for these two projects?
Yes, yeah, so, moving forward, I'm not expecting us to have a meeting in Mar- the sec- the regular meeting we have in March. I'm expecting for that to be canceled. regular meeting we have in March, I'm expecting for that to be canceled, um, I am expecting to come back in April and really hit the code text amendments for the city center zone, the commercial zone and the conditional use permits and to really, I'm gonna, in the next six weeks, really focus as much as I can on working through some updates on the code amendments and bringing you something that we can start working on, that's gonna be our next heavy lift, is amending that code.
And that's when we need the public involved.
Yeah, because that's when the public has a say in all this, when we get to this point, a lot of times, our hands are tied, when it's an administrative issue, our hands are tied so many times, but on the code amendments, that is a great time for us to get public feedback.
I just have a quick question, since we've canceled the March 20th, why didn't we just do this meeting on the 20th instead? Why did we do it early?
Well, because we have to process applications with a due process, so our policy is that if we have multiple applicants that have met the requirements to be on an agenda, that, that we have too much, that we will schedule a second meeting, so that was the case what happened, we had, we had the Best Western and the Town Center that met our requirements, had the information to us that they needed to before our deadline and we just had too much bulk, we didn't wanna have a six-hour meeting last week or two weeks ago, so instead of having a six-hour meeting, we opted to schedule a second meeting, which is something that we do when we have a heavy lift like that.
So you're saying that tonight's meeting was supposed to be last month?
This was all on the last month, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Sorry, guys, I shouldn't have made that more clear. All of this was on last month's meeting, Katie and I talked and I'm like, we're worthless after three hours anyway, so like, let's not go till midnight, let's.
Yeah, I missed that whole piece of it, I missed.
God, yeah, I'm glad we can clarify that.
So why have we?
I had suggested it, I think, two meetings ago, that like, this doesn't work, then the next meeting was all of this, and I was like, Katie, we have to split it.
Right, yeah, can you imagine going through last week's, like, or two weeks ago, three week and then this, it would be too much.
So that's, you know, I think, and that's important for me to just say out loud on the record, like, if there is a public hearing, anything that can bump, I think we should reconvene again on the bulk of the other stuff that isn't answered.
Because I think the minute you add, how many public hearings, do we have four or?
On the Town Center, we have four, plus we had the, on January's meeting, we had five.
Right, and so you're saying you have five public hearings, given X number of seats at two minutes a person, plus our own disagreements? Like, there's no way, there's no way.
Yeah, but, you know, a lot of times, like, when we're handling code text amendments, we don't have any public comments.
Right.
And that's really when it's super helpful, but we don't have any, so it's hard to know when to schedule that or not, right?
There'll be some anonymous Facebook posts.
Perfect, get the word out.
Get the word out. Well, I was gonna say, I'll find the comment.
Are we done then?
Uh, we have to make a motion to adjourn unless, Scott, Scott, I don't wanna deprive you, did you ever, okay. I motion to adjourn.
I second.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
We finally all agree.
We agreed on minutes.
Hold on one second, let me just finish typing.
I abstained, that was funny, I liked it.
Okay.